Okay, I'll call the order of the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three Regular Meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business will be our Pledge of Allegiance, and Pastor Josh couldn't make it tonight, so we'll have a moment of silence after the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone please stand for their pledge.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is this slide, and our station is very, and the public board is with the hands, on the nation, the God, in the visible, in the earth, in justice, law.
Our next order of business is public hearings, but we do not have any. And the next order of business is public comment sessions. Does anybody, would anyone care to address the board at this time? If not, I'll close the public comment session, and we'll move on to constituent concerns. Does anybody have any constituent concerns that they want to comment on?
I have an update.
Okay.
I was at another meeting earlier this week, or last week, and ran into somebody who lives in the Fines Creek area, and she was celebrating the fact that she has fiber to the home for Internet. And she was just very pleased with the great grant and things that have happened. To see that come to fruition is very important. So they really struggled in that area through COVID, and it's good to see something we've been working on, helping the citizens. So that's all I wanted to say. It's just exciting to see it be down there.
I had a couple of issues, Kevin, and got with Brian, got them resolved. Surrounding the Internet, we had a great Catalmans, Haywood County Catalmans Association Beef Roast Saturdays a week ago. It was a huge success, raised a lot of money for the scholarship program through the Haywood County Catalmans Association. And in the process of being there, I talked to several people, and the great grants, they are progressing. One person said, hey, they've brought that cable right on closer up to my home. And he said that they had promised him that, you know, they'd build it on out, and he's soon to be connected. So that was very good. And that's about all I had.
Barry, you got anything? No? Okay. I just want to comment on, I was at a ribbon cutting yesterday, New Covenant Church in Clyde is, will be opening a daycare, I believe, in the next month or two, and it'll be for ages three, four, and five. So that's a need that our community is needing, and so that'll, I think, he said they had forty positions, or forty, I guess you call them slots for little guys to come there and for daycare. So if anybody's interested in that, I want to throw that out there. And also, I want to mention that Brian's out of town for a few weeks, and so if anybody has any needs to contact, we do have our staff available, and Chris Boyd is our Assistant County Manager. And please contact Amy at the manager's office, or Chris, and they can help you with any needs that you may have. So I wanted to comment on that. Anything else to that? Okay, I'll move to agency, administrative agency reports and presentations, and our first would be the North Carolina Office of State Budget Management Disaster Recovery Update on Tropical Storm Fred, the recovery efforts. We have our General Counsel of North Carolina OSBM Disaster Recovery, Derwin Jones, and Assistant Director of North Carolina OSBM Disaster Recovery, Christian Moyle. So welcome, and appreciate y'all coming out today.
Thank you.
I guess you've come a long ways.
Yes, I have. Thank you, Commissioners, for extending us the invitation to give you an update on Tropical Storm Fred recovery efforts. My part will be brief. I will give you an update as to the legislative efforts. We've tried to get additional funding for private road and bridge projects which have greatly exceeded residential reconstruction. And so far, we are aware that the Speaker of the House is actually looking at some of the proposed legislation that we've provided Representative Pless in February and May. So hopefully, when the state budget passes, there'll be either flexibility to move funds around that have already been appropriated for Tropical Storm recovery efforts, or they'll appropriate additional funds for us to clear up the backlog of private roads and bridges. And the other thing to note, that we will be ending the application period to apply for the program on the two-year anniversary of Tropical Storm Fred coming up in August. And at this time, I'll turn it over to my Assistant Director, who will provide the update on the numbers.
Thanks, Derwin. Want to switch? I also would like to introduce our other staff that is here today. We have Sabrina Williams, she's one of our project managers, and we have Elizabeth Savage, she's the Assistant General Counsel, and she came up from Raleigh as well. Bree and I are locally mountain, so just to clarify. Thank you again for having us here, providing you another update. I know last time we were here was probably February. Things have, certain things have changed, others have not, so we'll keep it as brief as possible. Again, anytime you have any questions or just interject, please stop me, and we'll answer them along the way. That should be our first. Thank you. So we did the same, our very similar slide, last time we were here in February. We have a lot bettered numbers to present to you today, better in the way that they're more accurate. We still, it's no shock to see that our second line item for the bridges, roads, private roads and bridges, is at a hundred percent expended and obligated. And that was the same scenario when we met in February. We have also expended and obligated a larger percentage of our home reconstructions, and I guess the other majority would be under the home repairs.
Christian?
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I guess I am. But just a question there on that last slide that you have. I noticed that the landlord assistance was only like twelve percent. Can you tell us briefly what that landlord assistance is? I mean, I know a lot of landlords that would probably like to know that there's some money available for them. If you don't mind, just to tell us briefly what that's for.
Absolutely. I think I will, I'll let Derwin fill that one.
Landlord assistance is for repairing rental units. The statutory requirement required that tenants were displaced. That was also part of our legislative request, was to change the legislation that if they're displaced during the reconstruction process, but what the legislation states is that in order for a landlord to receive assistance, they had to have rental property, and the tenant had to be displaced by Tropical Storm Fred. We've encountered situations in which the property was damaged but didn't displace the tenant, and so we're trying to seek a legislative fix or a technical correction to the language to give us more flexibility to help more landlords fix their rental units. The largest rental complex is B Street Apartments in the town of Clyde. All thirty units were damaged and rendered uninhabitable, and we also have proposed legislation or special provision to try to provide additional funding for a public-private partnership to try to get those thirty rental units back on the market. And so, again, we're waiting for the state budget to see whether any of those requests make it into the budget. But certainly landlords can apply, and we would certainly encourage landlords to apply before the deadline coming up in August.
That's my next question, is the deadline August for those as well? And I guess another question, I just thought of, if a landlord made repairs themselves already, is that something that's reimbursable?
Sure, we would look at what the repairs were, verify that a tenant was displaced at the time of the disaster, and they'll be eligible, and certainly there's funding to assist those landlords in making repairs to those units.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
When do you think the state budget, is there any kind of schedule on when it may pass?
August, mid-August is what they're saying.
I believe the reporting last week was the General Assembly might make it mid-August.
Okay. But, so what is the deadline for, so the deadline for to apply is August also?
The deadline is to apply to August. We currently have about five hundred projects that need to be completed, and by putting an end date allows us to program the rest of the funds. We do also allow case-by-case exceptions to that, so if there are hardships, or if the applicant can explain why they were unable to meet the deadline, and we've had this come up with earthquake recovery, in which you do have hardship cases that do follow after we formally ended the application deadline, and we still got some people that were unaware that they had earthquake damage to the foundations of their homes, and depending on the situation, we can always help, so we're not turning a blind eye. But we want to try to encourage people to apply, so that can allow us to program the rest of the funds.
So if they apply, and you don't have the funds, then you don't, but if you do, and they apply, then, you know, so I guess you just want them to apply no matter what, whether you, okay?
Yes, and that will help with the adjustment in the second year of the budget, if we definitely know the number of applicants for each period, and we can budget what type of project, then we can go back to the General Assembly with better numbers, and assuming we've asked for budget flexibility to move some of the monies around to move forward more projects, because if you look at the chart, reconstructions are moving about half as fast, and we're not getting as many applications for home reconstructions, and that's usually, for per project, those usually cost, and for earthquake, Hurricane Matthew Florence, about two hundred to three hundred thousand per home on a reconstruction.
Three to three fifty maybe here?
Oh, yeah. Three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand are some of the prices that we've gotten on projects that we've competitively bid.
And so our most current statistics for each of the categories for under housing repair, and also with bridges and roads underway, you can see in this table here, the applications that we've received to date as of July thirteenth, eight hundred and fifty-eight applications. That does cover the total of the eleven counties across the TS Fred region. And we have completed three hundred and eighty of those projects, which puts us at a fifty-five percent completion rate. Not that we're patting ourselves on the back or anything. We're really, I feel we're making so much progress in the area, and we're seeing it, we're seeing it in the people's faces and their words, and obviously, our numbers reflect that as well. So to narrow it down to our application stats just for Haywood County, this gives you a general overall of our housing repair applications at one nineteen, bridges and roads at one sixty-two, and completion at three hundred and eighty. And then Haywood County is our, you know, most, most applications to date come from Haywood County, so that gives you those, that data there, too. And just a little map to show you the areas that were impacted the hardest based on the applications that we've received, and just tying that back into their address, so you can see it geographically. And then our final slide is just a reminder of the August seventeenth deadline to apply.
And the number of applications that we've received last month were only three, so we've had a steadily, steady decline in applications across all the counties, and that's one of the reasons why we're gonna end the application deadline, to get everyone to submit their applications if they have damage.
Yeah. Yeah, they've been slowly declining this whole year, so over the past six months, we've just seen a trickle come in each month, which, yeah, could reflect that we've reached out to everyone, but we fear that's not the case.
And then what happened with earthquake recovery, when we announced the deadline, that tied to the two-year anniversary of the earthquake in Sparta, you get a flurry of applications that last month, so we're anticipating that, and we currently have budget of that except for roads and bridges.
So any other questions for us?
Just a comment, I've always said from the very beginning that the state has really stepped by, stepped up, been by our side through all this in a big way, and we really appreciate two years. I mean, you're still being long-suffering toward people who have suffered, and we really appreciate that. One question from Mr. Jones, your point of contact for the budget reappropriation, is that Representative Pless, or can we, can we help push on our end for that?
Representative Pless, Senator Heiss, we did put provisions in the governor's budget. We've had, met with fiscal research, and we've presented the unmet needs for Tropical Storm Fred, including, most notably, the roads and bridges, and we've provided them addresses and identified about a hundred and fifty-three projects that we can't move to Grant Award until they either give us the flexibility to move the appropriations around. Department of Agriculture has closed down their program, and there, I think, is a twenty-four million dollar balance there that will revert in November. So we've asked, so we're, and there's positive movement in terms of the recent inquiry that NC DOT got from the Chief of Staff from Speaker Moore's office. So they did have copies of the documents that we sent to Representative Pless in February and May, which we believe is a positive sign, that they're at least considering and understanding that there's still an unmet need here in Haywood County and the other impacted counties.
Right. Just the flexibility to move that money around within that budget would be huge.
Yes, it would be. And it'd be nice to get additional appropriations as well, because if you move the money around, there still might be a need to replenish some of the pots. For example, if some landlords do apply, and we draw down the rest of that, then we might need additional funds. But we're still waiting, and we are hopeful with the state budget process that there will be additional funding for Tropical Storm Fred recovery.
Well, we appreciate you coming as far as you did, and sorry, Canada kind of blocked your view of the mountains up here in our county.
It's beautiful every time I come up here. Food's good, too.
That's smoke, I believe, from Canada, from what we've been told, but it's been pretty bad today. But appreciate you coming, and I like your lanyard, by the way.
Thank you.
So just to be clear, we're just encouraging those folks who have never made application to please apply within the next thirty days. Anything specifically that we should say publicly for them to bring or have ready, or that they will need?
Just to file an application online, and if they can't do it online, that's, we have an office and we can take an application, or they can call us if they're unable to come to our office, then we can come to them.
Good to know. Just want to encourage those folks to make application and see if we can use those funds locally.
And then we'll, we'll follow up, we'll follow up with them and get the documentation that we need, but we just need that application in right now.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. No need to miss that opportunity.
Exactly.
Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Our next item under Administrative Agency Reports and Presentations is Southwest Commission Annual Report, and we have our Southwest Commission Executive Director, Russ Harris, here tonight to do that. Welcome, Russ, appreciate you coming out.
Well, thank you all, and I, I'll say if I had a dime for every time I've walked into a meeting and people are saying positive things about broadband, I'd have a dime right now. That's a pleasant surprise. So as you all know, we're the Council of Governments for the seven western counties in North Carolina, the towns within the counties, and the eastern band of Cherokee Indians. And this time of year, I go around, present our annual report, which you all have on your desk in front of you, and just thank you all for your support. And one of the main ways that we're supported by our local governments is you all pay dues to us. Last year, our local governments, we have twenty-four member governments, they paid a total of about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in dues to us. With that, we brought in an additional twenty million dollars into the region to address key issues that you all are facing. So for every dollar our local governments paid in dues, we brought in about another hundred and twenty-nine dollars last year. Our mission is to improve the quality of life in the region. We do this through the work of our departments, which are Community and Economic Development, Workforce Development, our Area Agency on Aging, and our newest department, the Mountain West Partnership. Every year, we start with an idea of what we think the year's going to look like, and what we're going to be working on, and then sometimes that goes out the window. This year was one of those years. As of March sixth, our workforce department, everything they thought they were going to be working on this year has kind of gone out, and they've been heavily focused here in Haywood County. So one thing they did is they got together with state and local partners to do fourteen rapid response sessions with Evergreen employees, those were onsite, to make employees who were going to lose their jobs aware of all the resources that were available to them. The local agencies that were involved or partnered on that effort were the Haywood County Government, Haywood Community College, Mountain Projects, Haywood County Health and Human Services, and Haywood Chamber of Commerce. We also worked with those partners to do job fairs and resource fairs, and we'll continue to do those things as needed going forward. One of the things we're focused on right now is we got two-point-five-million-dollar dislocated worker grant, that is to help those workers going forward. We've got two years to distribute those funds, and those are, number one, if workers want to go back to school for further training, those funds are available to help them. Right now, the first class of CDL students is at Haywood Community College, they graduate in August, and they're making use of those funds right now to help them with that retraining effort. Also, if somebody wants to hire a worker who's been dislocated, and this can be the result of Evergreen, it can be one of those secondary effects, or even just any other impact in the region, we can help pay for the first six months of that employer hiring that employee, so that the cost of training, or the risk of just taking on a new employee, is kind of offset for that employer. So it takes some of the risk out of that for them. The easiest way for anybody to access that program right now would go to, be to go to NC Works and just start working with them, and I can kind of guide them through that process. And we've got a meeting at the end of the month with our program officer to go in more detail about what eligibility looks like, so once we know more, we'll come talk to you all again, because we'll certainly need help getting the word out and making sure people take advantage of those programs. Our Aging Department provides services for older adults, and they also do, put on different events, like our Elder Abuse Awareness Walks that we did across all seven counties on June fifteenth. We had over eight hundred participants take part in that. We also do senior celebration, that'll be September twenty-second this year, that's in Swain County. Last year, we had over six hundred people take advantage of that, and that's really just a day to celebrate our elders. We bring them, we feed them, usually all our staff and all our departments show up, and we just serve food for a couple of hours. We have entertainment, we have bingo, everything else going on that day just to celebrate them. Our Aging Department also serves mills. Last year, we provided funding for over a hundred and fifty-three thousand mills across the region, fifty-six thousand hours of respite care for caregivers, twenty-three thousand of those mills were here in Haywood County, and four thousand seven hundred and sixty hours of in-home aid were here in Haywood County, and six hundred hours of caregiver respite. We also provided funding for three thousand four hundred and ninety transit rides for older adults. And just to back up, and I think I highlighted this last year, anyone who's taking care of a family member that needs a break, like, they should call us, we've got funding to help bring somebody into the house. Sixty-five percent of all caregivers die before the person they're taking care of, so we want to take care of the caregivers. So that's one of the programs we really want to get worried out about, and make sure people take advantage of that. Our Community and Economic Development Department, it's like a broken record, last year we were working on housing and broadband, the year before that, we were working on housing and broadband, this year, we're working on housing and broadband. That department has brought in over fifteen million dollars for broadband expansion over the last three years. We also partnered with Haywood County to start the Southwestern NC Home Consortium, and after years of, I think, coming in front of you all, and we were kind of going through all the, jumping through the hoops to get that funding, we were able to allocate the first round of funding last year. A hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars of that came back to Haywood County. It was initially four hundred and sixty-two thousand, but one of those projects had to give some of that funding back. The funding that is in Haywood County will help fund site development for ten homes in Maggie Valley, and also went to help with operations, Haywood Pathways. So those are just a few kind of highlights of what we've done over the last year. The annual report goes into more detail, but again, the main purpose is to be here and thank you all for your partnership and your support. Also, in the annual report, there's an invitation, our annual dinner is next Monday, it's at five-thirty at Bettys Creek Vineyard in Jackson County, and we hope you all will be able to join us for that event. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
I would like to say thank you for all that the Southwest Commission has done, especially with our displaced workers. It has been, you know, it gives us peace and comfort to see our, to see them step up, and, you know, you met with the workers individually, and to me, that was, that was so impactful, that it wasn't just group meetings, it was meeting with people on a one-to-one level to tell them, you know, what their options were and what was available. And so it was, it was prompt response, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I would like to say, Commissioner Long, that you're pictured in this, and I bet he would sign autographs while we're here, right? Can we do that?
Sure.
Okay, good.
Phenomenal feat.
Phenomenal feat. Okay, we can get an autograph copy.
Russ, I appreciate all y'all doing, and I know two guys personally who are graduating with their CDLs soon, and they are so appreciative of the help that they've received, and they they've wanted to pursue that, they're at a stage in life to where they feel like they can, can do that very good, transition to that job very well, but the, the support that we receive through that, those funds, is tremendous, and they're very appreciative of that. And also, in this annual report, again, I don't know if David's here, but the Housing Consortium, the ten new homes here through Habitat for Humanity in Maggie Valley, that's huge, it's a great program, and again, I, I just, from the bottom of my heart, from the friends that I have, from the mill, the partnerships we have with Southwest Commission, David Garrett, NC Works, Nathan Ramsey, our partnership with Haywood County Chamber of Commerce, our partnership with Buncombe County Chamber of Commerce, Asheville-Buncombe County Chamber of Commerce, those have paid huge dividends, and I know, because I, I can tell you name after name of folks that I know who have got preferential job treat because they were displaced, they were unemployed, and because of the efforts of these partnerships that we have, they are employed very well. But now, one, one thing I do want to give you a heads up about, and some of the others I've talked to, a lot of folks are going to be waiting until January, February to enter the job force, because the, the severance package, the pie in the sky, that's, that's not anything extra. That counts as earned income in tax year twenty twenty-three. A lot of people are looking at it as an extended vacation, because they don't want to go back to work and pay an exuberant amount of taxes.
Correct.
And so there probably will be a And so there probably would be another little surge, the people that's been there 20 years and longer, probably after Christmas. So I would expect that to happen. Just give you a heads up. But do appreciate all the work, and, you know, economic development, job force. It's one of those things, it's like when, you know, I go back to the Bible where those guys were fishing all night and they caught no fishes. Well, the master came by and said, catch it on the other side of the boat, and they caught more than their nets would hold. But you have to keep a hook in the water. You might go for years, and these partnerships may look fruitless. Then all of a sudden, you land the big one. I know fellow commissioners in Burke County, they've had an industrial park down there for 18 years, and they just got their first tenant, and they're so excited. They'd had all this expense out for grading. It's right off I-40, and you can drive by and, they're so excited. They got their first tenant after 18 years of fishing and catching no fishes. And so a lot of people don't understand that, and it's very frustrating for me, you know, to, I like to catch fish.
Yeah, we may-
We've had several on the hook, you know, right up to the boat, and they flip off the line, but-
We're dealing with baseball percentages sometimes, right? It's a little low.
You're right.
And to your point, the rapid response, you know, that process is in place, and we hadn't, you know, we hadn't had to use it in about eight years, but the structure was there. And so, you know, the state, you know, makes sure that stays in place, and it's through our workforce department, and the partners are all in place. But I mean, the minute that announcement came, I mean, everybody kind of knew what to do, because that structure had been in place. Even though we hadn't been using it for a while, it was ready to go. So that's a great analogy.
It really was. Yeah, baseball's the only sport that you can fail two out of three times and be considered successful.
Go to the Hall of Fame.
Thank you, Russ.
Well, thank you all.
Just take on what the other commissioners have said, Russ. We appreciate y'all and our partnership. And what you just said, you know, after the announcement, I think we had hands on deck, you know, that next morning, and that means a lot. So appreciate the partnership. I've seen the annual report, and I was going to ask you what you've been doing, but then we'll be too sarcastic, but again, looking through that, you guys do a tremendous job, and we're very appreciative of it. So thank you.
Well, thank you all.
I just want to thank you too for what all y'all do, because y'all have taken a huge weight off of these people that's losing their jobs and stuff, and it really makes a big difference now. I know they appreciate it real well. Thank you.
Thank you all. I know a lot of people give lip service. We talk about partnerships all the time, and it almost loses its meaning. But our partnership with Haywood County, I mean, if it's not for Haywood County taking the lead on the home consortium, we don't have that money coming into the region. So we feel the same way. We're really grateful for the partnership, and thank you all.
Your staff, I may comment on something you said earlier about alerting people to the help that you can provide, folks who are giving in-home care to loved ones. That data really sticks out in my mind. I know I sat in a meeting a couple of years ago where 65% of caregivers, they just give out. I know firsthand. My family's been involved with taking care of elderly folks and disabled people, and it is a grind. And I know folks right now who probably would like to be linked to that care. You know, with the workforce situation in our local rest homes, you know, I think a lot of people are retraining hard to keep their folks at home, because there are, and it's nothing against the local care facilities. It's just that the workforce is stretched so thin that sometimes, you know, you try to keep them at home. And so is it Sarah Jane is your point?
Sarah Jane Milton, and her email is sarajane@regiona.org, or folks can email me at russ@regiona.org, and I can connect them with her. But they really, you know, they do a program called Money Follows the Person, which is the same idea. It's like, all right, if the person needs to be in the home, then let's get that money to help stay in the home.
Just if somebody needs to take a vacation and get away for a week or two. And I think that's something our local news media could probably help us publicize and get that word out there to notify the public that that service is available through your organization. So that's another great, great thing that you do.
Absolutely.
So they should call Sarah Jane, right?
Yes, absolutely.
She's the head point person on there?
Yep, absolutely.
I didn't know if I would have that, so. Appreciate all you do, Russ. I'm not going to, I'm just going to ditto everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you all.
Thank you. Our next order of business will be discussion adjustment of the agenda, but I do not have any. Does anyone have anything there?
No.
Okay, after that is our consent agenda. Does any of the commissioners have any questions on the eight items on the consent agenda? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion at all? Okay, I'll listen, favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Next order of business is regular agenda. We only have one item. It's to request approval to accept and appropriate North Carolina Emergency Management Capacity Building Competitive Grant in the amount of $270,704 for mobile communication support vehicle, and approval for county manager to execute all documents. And we have our emergency services director Travis Donaldson here tonight. How you doing, Travis?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Again, as Kevin said, approval to appropriate and accept some funds that we were able to secure from North Carolina Emergency Management. We've tried for a couple of years now to come up with funding to replace an aging trailer that has been kept in life for about 20 years now. It's not exactly ideal the way it's set up, so we saw the need and have managed to capture the funding there at no cost to our local taxpayers, so.
Appreciate y'all doing that, Travis. Anybody have any questions for Travis?
How will you use the trailer?
Searches, large incidents, anything, anywhere where we'll need tactical communications to be able to put a dispatcher or radio operator in. We'll have a level of technology to be able to integrate into some drone stuff. So it'll be multipurpose and a lot easier to use than digging a trailer out and getting that going, so.
Very beneficial during the floods, wouldn't it?
Yep. The communication trailer we've got went to Canton for, I think, about three months, and that's where their dispatch worked out of, so it would have been utilized then, same as the trailer.
Great if you never had to use it, wouldn't it?
Yep. Make my job a lot easier.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion after that? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Travis.
Okay, our next order of business is appointments, and we need to request approval by vote on one position representing accommodations of 20 units or more to the Haywood County Tourism Development Authority Board, fulfilling an untermed and unexpired term through December 31st, 2023. And Frank will pass out ballots, and we will vote.
You have voted to appoint Natalie Hawkins as the representative to the Haywood County TDA Board for the seat representing accommodations of 20 units or more.
Our next order of business will be a closed session. So on your time motion, we go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-381.11A5 regarding acquisition of real estate.
So move.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
It will be in closed session when enter the chambers in the back and and we will have probably an announcement later, so.
Okay, we've returned from closed session and do I have a motion at this time?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that the county contract to purchase the potential EMS site at the piece of property identified as parcel identification number 8616-38-5985 for a price of $399,000 and that the county manager or his designee be authorized to execute an offer to purchase and undertake a due diligence process for the site. I further move that if due diligence process is satisfactory, then the county complete the closing with the county manager or his designee authorized to execute all necessary documents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, I'll just say that in closed session, we've discussed potential sites for a new EMS station in the area and have evaluated several potential locations and we believe that this is the best available site considering its cost and development costs. And we had a study done a few years ago and they had identified a couple of sites in the county, one being in the Clyde area and one being in this area. And I think there was one other one, but this will help us to move towards making sure we have good coverage of the areas so that we can provide the best service possible and the quickest service possible to our citizens. Anybody else have anything they want to say?
No, other than the fact that at this point in time, I think our finance officers contacted the UNC School of Government and the American Rescue Funds can be applied to this project.
Yes, yeah, we'll be using the, what do they call it, ARCA or ARPA? ARPA funds, okay. Okay, does anybody have anything further for the board?
Travis, what did you say the response time? I hate to put you on the spot, but I know Chairman Inslee alluded to the fact that the response time to that ARC from here to there is like seven minutes, am I correct in saying that?
You want to come out and say anything Travis? You might elaborate a little bit on that.
I believe you're asking about the response time difference versus coming out of the Waynesville base into Maggie Valley if the Maggie Valley truck was out on a call and I believe that was, I believe you're right Tommy, in a seven minute difference to that location based on, based on drive and map, so that saves some, quite a bit of distance and time into a highly populated bedroom community in that, in that part of the county.
Just trying to, you know, build out why we came to that decision, you know, it boils down to response time, American Rescue Fund funds being applicable to this project and of course, the availability of this, this piece of property.
Yep, it's, in my opinion, a good, good move.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, anybody, any other discussion? Any comments? Okay, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to post? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, now, do we have any other business to bring before the board? Hey, here and now, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
We adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we adjourn.